This meeting of the City Eureka Springs City Council comes under order. A clerk will call, please.
Joyce Eller?
Here.
Mr. Perkypile absent with notice. James DeVito?
Here.
Terry McClung?
Here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
We have five.
Do you stand for the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next would be approval of the agenda motion to discuss.
I move.
Second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Words open? Ms. Schneider.
I assume fluoride would have been handed down here by Congress in the last meeting. It's not handed down to our own business, please.
Your own business?
Yeah.
So being number four.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
And I think we're going to need to postpone number two under new business again.
It's already postponed.
Spent.
Yeah, postponed pending planning action.
Okay. Same for the fire stations?
It is postponed.
Okay.
Number four, since Mr. Perkypile isn't here, under new business, please postpone.
Okay.
What about number one, Mickey, unfinished?
No, I actually have something today.
And under new business, is one and two really separate topics or could that be one?
It won't take it.
Consolidate one and two as one topic?
Could they be? Is there any reason not to? It's discussing the circus. It might as well.
You make a motion and a second.
Because it's two different things.
Are we talking about the different circuses and we're one of them or what?
Two different situations.
I make a motion, we combine them.
Who seconded the postponement of number four, new business?
Oh, me.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I don't care if it's all together as long as we understand that we have two things to talk about.
Sure.
So it's a decision. So I'll second his putting them together thing.
To join them together?
Yeah.
Okay. So motion made and seconded?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further? Okay, just so we're sure, postpone number four, old business. I'm sorry. Old business is addition of number four for fluoride, right?
Yeah.
And then number one and two under new business added together as one item. Number three under new business is postponed. Number four under new business postponed. The rest of them are as is. Any further changes? All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Next would be approval of the minutes for September 22, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, done. Next would be Commission Committee Authority Report, expired terms. I don't have anything under those unless there's anybody out front. Yes, sir.
Let's see, we've already voted on the CA PC, boys.
Yes.
I thought we did.
Okay. So I don't see anybody in here that's representing the commission, so we'll move on. Moves us to public comments.
It's coming.
Okay. We'll be here.
All right, Rachel Bricks.
Hello.
Yeah, you're on.
Hello, Rachel Bricks, One Magnetic. As a town, we have said no to a lot. No to high voltage power lines, no to hog factories near the Buffalo, no to discrimination against gay marriage, no to open carry, no to domestic violence, no to fluoride, no to butchering our trees. I would ask we follow that trend and say no to circuses with animals with an ordinance prohibiting traveling animal shows from ever returning to Eureka Springs. If there is still a question in your mind about whether or not circuses put the public at risk or if circuses are abusive, I will ask you to consider that 27 countries have national bans on circuses. That's the entire country. Sweden, Greece, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Finland, Denmark, Poland, Portugal, just to name a few. Over 200 cities and districts in the UK have bans and Australia, Ireland, Spain, Canada, and many other countries have bans as well. In the US, 21 states, that's almost half of our states here at home, have full or partial bans on circuses as well. As a matter of fact, in April of this year, the Traveling Exotic Animal Protection Act was introduced into Congress and they are contemplating passing it right now. Keeping elephants in chains and confining wild animals in small cages and forcing them to perform unnatural tricks for the sole purpose of human entertainment is increasingly hard to justify in our advanced society. An educated public prefers to see humane entertainment and human-only circuses are thriving. For example, Cirque du Soleil has grown from a solitary show in 1990 to 19 shows now performing in 271 cities, eight separate shows on the Vegas Strip alone, and generating an annual revenue that exceeds $810 million. In sharp contrast, the Piccadilly Circus, which does have animals, recently canceled shows throughout Southern California due to poor ticket sales. We realize that it is too late to cancel the upcoming circus at Lake Leatherwood in a few weeks. However, it is not too late for Eureka Springs to enhance its image and take a stand, as it is known to do, and be a leader in our region for the protection of animals and to keep our community safe in the future from the risks associated with traveling animal shows. Besides, animal abuse is in direct violation of Eureka Springs City Code 60405 already. The ordinance I've given you tonight is only slightly modified, as noted from the one email to you last week, and is similar to ones already passed all over our country. In no way, and I repeat, in no way, does this ordinance affect the good works of Turpentine Creek or Passion Play. Number one, they are both outside of the city limits. Number two, this ordinance specifically targets traveling shows. And number three, an extra cushion, if you will, is in Section 1 that reads, and I quote, "If you..." Excuse me. "This restriction shall not apply to an exhibition at non-mobile permanent institution or facility." End quote. I urge you to please consider placing this ordinance on its first reading tonight. Let's please be the very first town in Arkansas to say no to the circus. Thank you.
Raven Durge and Steve... I can't understand it. I don't understand the last name, Steve. For... Okay, Raven and Steve. Can't read the last name.
My name is Raven Durkey and this is Steve Forbeck. Diane Wilkerson invited us to speak tonight regarding an art installation application that we recently submitted to the HDC for their approval. Our application is to repair and paint the city-owned stairwell that connects North Main Street to Center Street, also referred to as Henry's Staircase. This is a cement stairwell that is in need of patching and repair, and councilperson James DeVito has generously offered to do the necessary repairs to the cement steps in order that they be suitable for painting a semi-permanent art installation. We plan to raise the funds for the paint and the supplies with sponsorships and private donations. We've submitted examples of the stairwell and steps painted similar to what we envisioned and a photograph of the... in photographs of the stairwell that connects North Main to Center Street. The completed project we see as a group effort that involves students and local artists in the creation of this project. We have already spoken with the Eureka Springs High School principal and an enthusiastic high school's art teacher, and once we have the necessary approvals, we plan to provide an opportunity for the Eureka Springs High School students to participate in providing input for the design, as well as the practical aspects of the projects, including budgeting and determining the amount and type of materials. Designs that are being considered are bright and innocuous, including a waterfall, Rapunzel with long flowing hair, stacks of books, happy fish, or playful cats. The paint itself will only be applied to the face of the steps, not the treads, and our budget will allow for maintaining the installation annually as needed. And we wanted you guys to be aware and let you know that we won't give any input.
I like the fish.
I like the fish, too.
Coin?
I like the waterfall because it's the city that water built.
Yeah.
Yip likes the books.
There are any number of possibilities, really.
The fish is pretty wild.
You want us to keep these or...
You can keep them, yes.
Okay, we'll let you keep these. Okay.
And that's all we have. Would you like us to answer any questions or...
We're not allowed to do that.
We can come back later.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is y'all's time to talk.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I think we're done.
Okay.
Oh, and we also think the circuses are really last century and we'd like to see them banned. Thank you.
Darling Schrum?
Okay, thank you.
Darling Schrum? There she is.
As you know, I've spoke to you several times before about this. We need our clean water. We need it pure and we do not need any water with contaminants in it. And contaminants, I'm talking about, the FDA has a list of around 30 contaminants that cause cancer and are unacceptable in drinking water. And anything that is put in it needs to be tested to make sure that none of these contaminants are in it. None of us want to have cancer. None of us want to have a product out there that we're not able to take a bath in. None of us want to have a product that causes health problems. And there are a lot of elderly people here that their immune system is not up to everybody else's and that cannot take this. So we just need to make sure. Mickey Schneider has an ordinance that she is introducing. Please vote for this. Please help keep all the people here safe. You know, this needs to be worked out. And I know that you want to have clean water for your grandchildren, for your pets, for everything, and every friend that comes to see you. And let's keep this town that way. Most of Europe has banned adding products because of the contaminants that were in the fluoridated water that they put in. And that has been the biggest thing that they are against is all the contaminants in it. And I don't believe that this place out here has been doing checking to make sure that their product is going to be pure. So please, please vote on this. I just beg of you to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Susie Chippinger?
Clippinger.
Clippinger? Oh, okay.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Susie Clippinger. I've lived in Rogers for 30 years and I'm here to support the appeal for the ordinance for the circus ban in Eureka Springs. And Americans are becoming increasingly aware that circus animals suffer from severe confinement unavoidable because of the constraints of a difficult life of constant travel on the road. Tigers, bears, elephants, and other wild animals spend hours on end either chained in small cages or crowded into trailers and train cars, traveling for most of the year with little or no exercise. What's that like, I ask you, for elephants who normally will travel hundreds of miles in one week when they're in the wild? As the internet and educational television programs expand, our understanding of the natural world and the amazing creatures we share it with, Americans are increasingly becoming more sensitive to the complex needs of animals. With our current education comes the growing understanding that these animals are not getting their most basic welfare requirements met under the harsh constraints of life on the road in a traveling circus outside of their natural habitat. Investigations have documented a pattern of extremely violent and abusive training methods where pain, punishment, and fear are employed to force these wild animals to do unnatural and silly tricks. The tools of the trade include bow hooks, whip, electric prods, which are used to hit, hook, and shock animals. This cruelty only furthers the state of mental and emotional strain, which is in addition to the adverse and unrealistic circumstances of confining such a diversity of exotic and predatory animals in the same close proximity of each other. The threat to public and animal safety has proven to be inevitable time and time again. Children in particular have been victims at the breaking point of these unnecessary stresses. Families attend the circus to have a fun and relaxing time away from the busyness of their life. When disaster hits at a circus, and it happens a lot more than people realize, that is not a fun time for any involved, but these circumstances happen and they happen often. The general public have not been aware, as they need to be, of these issues we are presenting to this council today. When people go to the circus, they generally don't think how it got there or where it is going next. They're there to enjoy the moment as a family, a family outing. If they were to see what the animals go through in order to bring this entertainment, their human compassionate side would turn aside. This is why we are appealing to this city council to adopt this ordinance for much-needed regulation in the area of exotic animals in traveling circuses. This situation is a dire need of direction and guidance, and that is why we need a city ordinance to help put that in place. The Traveling Exotic Animal Protection Act, HR 4525, is before Congress right now and is being noticed because of a new awareness revealing the need of responsibility to protect the welfare of animals and ensure the public's safety. Just one last sentence.
One more.
Yeah. A prohibition on the use of exotic and wild animals in traveling circuses is proportionate, responsible, and the least expensive solution to these problems. And there's a lot of exciting new educational ways that are taking place, that are filling circuses without animals, and I will brief these with you for you to review. And I just want to thank you very much for your time to this issue.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Sue Ewan? Ms. Sue Ewan? And I hope I said that right, because that's the way it's spelled. E-W-A-N?
Ewan, yes.
Ewan? Okay. Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Come in.
Hi, I'm Sue Ewan, and my husband and I moved here almost a year ago. One of the things that attracted us to Eureka Springs was the animal-friendly nature of the city, and we were really surprised to learn that the circus was coming. In a place where you can take your dog to a restaurant with you if you're sitting on the patio, it just doesn't seem fitting that there might be something down the road where animal abuses are taking place. I've not liked the circus for a long time, but I'm not going to keep you with all that. I just wanted to voice my opinion on the possible ordinance and show my support for that. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Jerry Milligan?
How you doing, sir?
How you doing?
Fine.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay. My name is Jerry Milligan. I'm here representing Carson &amp; Barn Circus... Carson &amp; Barn Circus. Want to tell you just a little bit about myself before I tell you about or try to answer some of your concerns. In 1996, I retired as superintendent of schools in Bismarck, Missouri. In 1998, I joined Carson &amp; Barn Circus with the intent of traveling with them for two years. This is many years later and I'm still there. We have been accused of abusing animals. We... There is a video that is unfortunate that probably you've seen. If not, I'm sure you've had the link to watch it. That is a very unfortunate video. It took an undercover person four years to accumulate the information that's in that video. And I would challenge you to turn your volume down and watch the video again and see what happens. Now, the language, the things that are said on that video are inexcusable. But it's nothing short of what was said in locker rooms across the nation Friday night at football games. If you've ever been around coaches, you know that they insist or don't insist, they encourage their boys to go out and rip their head off, you know, break their leg. They don't mean that, nor did Tim mean that. Once that was brought to our attention, it was investigated by us and by the Humane Society, and nothing was found to be... The claims were unfounded, maybe is the best way to say it. We invite you, we invite the public, every day, everywhere we go, to come out and watch us from the time we get to town and unload the animals until we load them back up at night, or the next morning, actually. We don't load them at night. And I've traveled with the show. I assure you that when we travel, when we get to town, if the elephants need water and I need water in my motorhome, the elephants are going to get there first, as will the goats and the horses and the other animals that travel with us. I do not believe in reincarnation. I'm going to say that one more time. I do not believe in reincarnation. But if I did, I can think of nothing that I would rather be reincarnated as than a Carson &amp; Barn Circus elephant. They have excellent care. Yes, they do travel, but if you'll watch our route, we don't travel far, and that's for their benefit. They get out, they get their exercise, they don't go on hundred-mile walks, but they are out and about.
That's good.
Okay. I think my time's up. Thank you for listening to me. I encourage you, don't pass that ordinance.
Would you mind staying for the discussion?
I will, yes, ma'am. I'll be here.
Thank you very much. All right, Melissa Green?
This is the world's...
Yes, you can do it. Just leave it open, Melissa. Step, get it, step.
Hi, Melissa Green, 17 Bridge Street. Well, number one, I'm not going to talk about the videos. There's more than one video. What I'm going to talk about is the USDA's report on Carson &amp; Barns. Sure, it's really easy to read, but FOIA each incident, not so easy to read. It backs up all the videos. They're hard to watch, they're excruciating. I'm going to read you something else. This is what circus animals go through. Virtually 90% of the time, their lives are spent in chains or cages. 11 months a year, they travel over long distance in boxcars with no climate control, sleeping, eating, and defecating in the same cage. When allowed out, these animals are trained using extreme disciplines such as whipping, hitting, poking, shocking with electric prods. That's because they're not meant to entertain us. They're meant to be in the wild. I live in Eureka Springs, and it is a town full of love for its animals. We have the Humane Society and the events that go on there, and you see how they're attended. We have the wonderful Turpentine Creek, that's a sanctuary for animals such as this, animals that are abandoned. We have over four others that work in our town rescue things. This town loves animals. We just had a new dog park built by Ms. Bricks over there. We love our animals. This is a horror to me. This is just a horror that this could even come to this town. You know, I'm going to say this. It's an after-school thing that brought this as a benefit. And I get it. It's a great thing. The after-school thing is a good thing. I tell you what, I believe the tickets are $12. What the school after-school thing is going to get is less than $2. They're having a bake sale next week. Take the price of the $12 ticket. You just bought six circus tickets and you didn't support animal abuse or sanction it. I'm just at a loss. Anyway, please, please, please pass this ordinance. It's so important. If we don't go to these circuses, they will end. And then maybe these animals can end up at a place like Turpentine Creek where they're not abused, they're loved, and they're cared for, and they have some dignity. Thank you. And Mr. Pate, if somebody can afford a $50,000 car, they can afford to plug our parking meters and they can afford the parking ticket, too.
Thank you, ma'am. I agree with you. Okay, Kit Shepherd?
What does that reference? Does it... Yeah, I think it wrote.
Yeah, close enough, I guess. Tracy Ellen Casey. I'm sorry, Tracy Ellen Kelly.
Here's Kit.
Hi, come in.
Hi, I'm Kit Shepherd, and I'm here again about the fluoride. And I've found even more information than I had the last time about what this stuff is doing to people all over the world, not just here, but all over the world. And I've talked to our health department, sent emails to the state health department. I didn't hear from the department itself, but one of the men that is a part of that has sent me some emails. His main thing that he can say is, well, we're just following what the CDC tells us to do, and so that's what they're doing. And they're not looking to do anything about stopping this. No matter what the people say, they're not going to hear us. And I just feel, to me, I feel like we're citizens of the United States and we're supposed to have freedoms and we're supposed to be able to vote for what we want and what we don't want. We're supposed to have some say in what goes on in our lives. And these people are trying to do something to us that will hurt us bad, and especially our children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And somebody has to do something about it. Somewhere along the line, and I'm not just concerned about fluoride, but all the other things that they're poisoning, and they're poisoning the air, the water, everything that we have, our food, is being ruined by genetic modification, putting poisons in our food. And everything we have is coming at us that we don't deserve this, and we don't want it, and there's no reason why our government can do this to us. And if we can't stop it on this level, we need to go higher and stop it wherever we can stop it, but somebody's got to do something. And I've been here a long time, and I expect to stay here a long time. And I expect that my children will be safe while they're here, my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren. And I feel that we are all responsible for this. And if we can't do something to stop these people from doing this... The CDC has been charged recently with... They have put or allowed to have put in vaccinations the chemicals that are in this fluoride. It's aluminum and mercury and stuff like that, and it's caused autism. And I don't know if any of you have been around an autistic child, but that child did not deserve that. And that's the way it's going today. This fluoride's going to do the same thing to our children. And if we can't have our children come here and be able to drink water and know that they're safe drinking it... our children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And somebody has to do something about it. Somewhere along the line, and I'm not just concerned about fluoride, but all the other things that they're poisoning, and they're poisoning the air, the water, everything that we have, our food, is being ruined by genetic modification, putting poisons in our food. And everything we have is coming at us that we don't deserve this, and we don't want it, and there's no reason why our government can do this to us. And if we can't stop it on this level, we need to go higher and stop it wherever we can stop it. But somebody's got to do something. And I've been here a long time, and I expect to stay here a long time. And I expect that my children will be safe while they're here, my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren. And I feel that we are all responsible for this. And if we can't do something to stop these people from doing this... The CDC has been charged recently with, they have put, or allowed to have put in vaccinations, the chemicals that are in this fluoride. It's aluminum and mercury and stuff like that, and it's caused autism. And I don't know if any of you have been around an autistic child, but that child did not deserve that. And that's the way it's going today. This fluoride's going to do the same thing to our children. And if we can't have our children come here and be able to drink water and know that they're safe drinking it, there's something wrong with everything and everyone. And we all need to do whatever we can do to call a halt. I don't care who we are. We have to do this because we don't need to die, our children don't need to suffer, to be sick, to be dumbed down.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Am I finished?
Yes, ma'am, your time's up. Thank you very much.
[laughing]
I don't think you're finished, but your time's up.
[laughing]
Okay, thank you. Trace Ellen Kelly?
Is that the state response to her? Is that... Do you know anything about that?
Trace Ellen Kelly?
I'm not sure what they said to her. Is that what it just... [inaudible]. It's Holly Winger.
I still think it'd be used to go to federal court. My warrant dropped. Big cheaper than your name dropped.
Hello, Holly, here. How are you?
I'm fine. I spoke here on the fourteenth of July. This is the first time I'd ever spoken at a city council meeting, and I spoke a little bit at length about the water fluoridation project. And I'm just here today, again, to reiterate in the strongest terms possible, to urge you to vote for Mickey Schneider's resolution that she's going to present, and to say that I am extremely concerned about unknown materials that will get put into the water as part of the fluoridation action, that it will not be disclosed. And I think this, I believe it to be illegal to do that. And this is a very special city, and we need to stand up to this idiotic policy at this point in history with all the science that's known, and also not knowing what other materials and contaminants may be in, or substances may be in the, whatever is put into the water that could cause harm. And the non-disclosure alone is, I think it's ridiculous. So, and we need to avoid the expense and the liability that can come from that, from people being harmed. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I am against the circus, so the support we see everybody's going to say about.
Dave Spencer? There you are. Hello, Dave Spencer.
Yes, thank you. Simply want to say, my partner and I, Nan Johnson, she's next, so I'll speak for her.
Just get her, bring her on.
Okay. We're both opposed to the circus and the fluoridation.
Okay.
That simple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Barb Dunham?
Hi, I haven't seen most of y'all in forever. Okay, I am here for two reasons. First, I'm completely against the circus. I'm for kids in this town. Anybody that knows me knows I will do anything for a child anytime. The after-school program is vitally important to our kids, but the circus isn't, okay? There's a way to do it so that we don't have a circus and we can have an after-school program. Six years ago, I wrote the grant that funded our Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center. It gave them three-quarters of a million dollars for five years. The grant ran out. They don't have the money for their program now. They won't have it until they get another grant. I'll write the grant for them. I don't care. It won't be any charge. They didn't pay me for it the last time. I just don't want to see any animals injured just so a child can benefit. That makes no sense. We're not teaching our children anything. We're not providing a good example. My grandbaby Bella, she's four. Most of y'all have seen her running around town. She goes to Eureka Springs Elementary. I don't want her to grow up with the idea that it's okay to watch an animal dance around for fun. We go to Turpentine Creek every week. Bam Bam's her best friend, okay? When he sees her, he comes running. They're buds. That's the kind of relationship a child should have with an animal. Please do not approve the circus. I know you've approved it for now, and I know we can't do anything about it, but write the ordinance. Please keep it from happening. And if they need money, I'll help them get it. I have a ninety-eight percent grant success rate. Hello, I'm here, I'm free. I can do that. Thank you. Thanks, Morris.
Thank you. Natalie Manering?
I know, all right.
When I was a child, if I had known what the animals were going through in the circuses, I would have been devastated. To call that entertainment is just a travesty. And if there is any education that's going to take place from the circus being here, I hope it's to teach everyone that we don't ever want to do that again. And I'd also like to say about fluoride that we've, the issue of fluoride has been talked down into the ground. You know, some people think it's fine, some people think it's terrible, I'm one of the latter. But the issue really now is what's legal and what's not legal. And if Carroll Boone Water District is not going to do what's legal, then they're going to hear from the citizens. It's certainly not going to stop here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that moves us out of public comments and to unfinished business. Number one is discussion, actually, update on disposal of yard waste. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open?
Actually, we have stuff finally, after going back and forth and playing phone tag. The situation, I've talked to two different state departments that cover this. Our inspector, who is Justin Sparrow, he and I have been playing phone tag for a week now. I don't know why or why we haven't been able to connect, but we have. So in the meantime, I've talked to our other two departments, and basically what it comes down to in regards, okay, our yard workers are having their biggest problem dealing with the vines. Because Public Works can't take the vines and throw it in the chipper because we don't have the right size or age of chipper, and so it gets tangled and causes all kinds of mechanical problems. So Public Works has denied them the vinery. So if they separate vines from the rest of the yard waste, they still have to go somewhere with it, and if it can't be chipped up, we can't throw it into the compost pile. I don't understand that part, but that's how it works. So this has been our problem. Now, the city does do composting with leaves and chipped wood and what have you, and for years, we have given away the compost to local needy areas, what have you. This has been all part of the deal with the state. So we do have a compost area, and they're very specific on how much yard waste can go in it versus how much, they have a special word for it.
Biosolids?
There it is, biosolids. People poop, okay, is what it comes down to. And it all mulches out and composts on, and comes out fine. Now, the problem we have with the vinery is we need to be able to burn it. Since we can't chip it unless we get a brand-new chipper that will deal, we need to burn it. Because for whatever reason, and this is what I'm waiting to hear back from Justin about, in the past, we have thrown our yard waste into various ravines to let it compost naturally, and we got stopped from doing that through EPA and I believe it was ADEC after the biosolids got involved. So we can't do that, so we have to burn it. We cannot burn. Burning is all of a sudden, after we all grew up with leaf burning on the curbside and whatnot, it's all of a sudden bad for us. So we can't burn unless we get special permission after a storm. So this is the way our Arkansas Air Code reads in regards to the not being able to burn yard waste, Section eighteen point six oh five of the Arkansas Air Code. I'm going to quote this part, "No practical," I can never say this word, "no practicable, safe, and lawful alternative methods of disposal, and that open burning is absolutely necessary and in the public interest." He has told me, if we do a resolution, we, the council, do a resolution, that burning of the vines is absolutely necessary and in the public interest. There's a form we fill out after we've passed this resolution. They in the State Department will look at that and will probably give us permission to burn once a month or less often as needed in regards to yard waste. So this would be a matter of, it would still be separated, the vines and whatnot would still be separated from the yard where it says yard waste that's getting composted, but it would also be saved in one spot, and then once a month or every other month or however often we need to do it, we would then burn it. And in the meantime, it has been slowly disintegrating anyway, composting down, so it's not going to take that much to do it. That's the point we are at now. Questions?
So have you shared this with Dwayne, and is he ready to draft a sample resolution to bring to us, or what?
No, I haven't talked to him about doing a resolution. We have been talking for months now in regards to the whole waste situation. He gave me the department names.
So could we postpone this until Dwayne?
Oh, yeah, I don't expect any action tonight. I'm saying this is where we're at. I want to get a general idea of how y'all feel.
Take it to Dwayne.
He's for anything that'll get this done, generally speaking. Okay, so the statement that we need is there is no practicable, safe, and lawful alternative that's absolutely necessary in public interest. That's all we have to do. So what you're saying then is as long as Dwayne says he agrees with this, let's write up a resolution. This is what y'all are saying is the solution? Questions?
Well, but you want us, what, tonight, would you like us to direct Tim to write a resolution covering this?
I should get with Dwayne one more time. Do you, you need me to get with Dwayne one more time, right?
I think you need to go back to Dwayne, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure y'all are, I'm not going to waste everybody's time if y'all aren't for any of this.
Well, apparently, it's quite a crisis because Jack Burn has talked to me on the phone about it. It's a problem.
We have something like twenty-five yard workers, and what they're doing right now basically is putting stuff in bags and putting it on the curb.
Mr. DeVito, get your hand up, sir.
We're talking about commercial businesses that have an issue with how they dispose of their product. I'm not in favor of open burning for the city of Eureka Springs. I think it sets a bad example.
Once a month?
Open burning sets a bad example for the city.
Mr. Mitter.
Okay. It would be once a month, depending on load, every other month. Rogers and Fayetteville, just for local areas, both supply an area for their commercial yard workers to put stuff. We are nowhere near as big as them. I personally still think we should be able to just throw down hillsides that have been volunteered by private owners to build up and mulch out and stuff. Believe it or not, individual people can go ahead and burn on their own property.
I didn't say...
Now, do you want people burning all over? Do you want a once-a-month timeframe? I mean, how many people actually live around Public Works?
Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to hear from Dwayne if we could refer it that way, please.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion on the table?
So a motion to refer this issue that Mickey Schneider has brought up to Dwayne for further input.
I'll second that.
May I second any further discussion on it? Mr. Weaver?
No.
You had the Weaver finger slapped, so I was going to get you with it. Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves us on to number three, response from Hospital Commission regarding meetings taped and occurring in the jury room. That's mine, apparently. It is on the agenda for next Monday for their discussion. So they'll, I guess they'll make up for mine next Monday.
I'd move to table it to our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What time is that hospital thing? One o'clock?
One o'clock. Echo Clinton. Okay, moves to number four, discussion of fluoride. Motion to discuss, Mr. Schneider.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Floor's open.
Okay. Says a lot of paperwork. Last meeting, I gave y'all a copy of the...